October ninth. Planning board meeting, please stand for the pledge. The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have one resolution this afternoon. WHB ten real T L L C. I need a motion to accept the resolution as written.
Make the motion.
Hold in favor. The fill application is still the fill application. There wouldn't be a meeting without one. And we'll start with West Hampton N L L C forty-three Main Street.
Mike Henryhand, forty-one. Excuse me, Lemon Mitchell Road, New York, New York. One one nine seven eight. We're looking for an extension of time on the original planning board agreement. Where I had requested that time that we get an extension of time due to the fact that Mr. Mantini was involved in some other projects. We're looking for some time for the extension to be extended till springtime.
Well, I want to give you something. Take a look at these. This is your property that we asked you to clean up last time you were here. This is what we call seasonal outdoor seating without a permit amongst other things. And we're not going to entertain an extension until that lot's cleaned up. The fence is gone and all of the debris on that property is removed. It's cut clean. The village would probably even cut it clean if it weren't for that fence.
I understand.
We're not going to give an extension tonight. You clean that up and come back.
Okay, what day do you want us back?
I beg your pardon?
What day do you want us back?
When you're done with the cleanup.
Well, give us.
You can, you'll just give Megan a call, she'll put you back on the agenda.
Okay, November?
On to the twenty-third.
Okay.
Okay, the other thing is we keep the fence up for liability purposes only. And that's why it's there.
It's unnecessary.
One whole side's unfenced, so it doesn't prevent people from entering. But park side is, that has no fencing.
Okay. Well, doesn't the park should have a fence on it for the park? No? Okay. Then we'll get that done before the twenty-third and we'll be back by then. Okay, and then we'll have.
I'll take those pictures.
Is there anything else besides those issues?
Why don't we take care of that first?
Okay.
And then let's have another conversation. This has been going on a while.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't know. I can't speak for the rest of the board. So, and I would prefer to have the village attorney here when we have that discussion with you.
Okay. We'll see you on the twenty-third then.
I look forward to it.
We'll have it done. Okay, thank you.
Can I give these to you, Megan? Okey dokey. We have another extension, Michael Gelson, forty-nine Bayfield Avenue.
No one's here for that.
I don't think there's really, yeah. This is really not a problem since it's a fill application only, right?
It's been a few months with the A R B going back and forth, but now we're at the end with them. We think we'll be done with them soon, but their fill approval has since lapsed.
Okay, so we can grant them a extension on their fill application?
Thank you.
Can we do that without Tony here or? Okay. I need a motion to extend the existing fill application. What do we give him, six months?
I don't remember if it's six months or a year, but it does, yeah, six months.
We'll give him six months.
Make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Prime Storage, ninety-eight Depot Road.
Good afternoon.
Aye.
Joe Nitzel, J M N Architecture, architect for the applicant. Last time we met, we had some comments, I believe, from the board on the exterior design of the building. There were a range of comments between commercial in nature, residential in nature, to provide a few examples of different designs that Prime has used in the past. The changes we've made to this version of the exterior. We've lowered the roof height by three feet for the reverse gable to be thirty-two feet now to our highest point instead of the thirty-five previously. We've lowered the asphalt shingle roof line to a lower elevation to make it look more like a two-story building instead of a three-story. We brought that whole mansard down six to eight feet or so. We've reoriented the wall panels to a horizontal configuration. We added an additional canopy along the north elevation. We removed the building-mounted signage and the associated lighting and added some additional faux glazing along the Depot Road elevation. Additionally, at the last meeting, there was some comments regarding both the north and south elevation and the lack thereof of glazing. So what we tried to do as well is incorporate that reverse gable element on both the north and south sides of the building. Lowered that same mansard roof line to align with the Depot Road elevation as well as added some glazing, so. In addition to that, we submitted an updated lighting plan, which I believe now would be in compliance with the village ordinance, but we would look for comments from anybody on that.
These renderings are really nice.
Thank you.
Looks good. Nice graphics, dude.
So we think overall this is definitely an improvement.
I think so.
So.
Looks like a hotel six.
I think it looks fine. I mean, I don't think you need to stick any more windows in the blank walls. Gable roofs look, you know, look nice. Yeah, I think it seems good. And I was one of the ones thinking it ought to look more industrial, I think.
Right.
This looks just fine to me.
Great.
Guess it's about as good as it's gonna look.
I'm ready to rent a room.
Well, if they don't, if it doesn't fly as a storage.
They put a pool in. Looks like I got a garage in the back and a pool, that's all I need.
Repurpose it as a hotel later.
So you have no additions, Raka, you're?
Listen, it's a bit, you know, there's only so much you can do with a storage building. It's about, it's as good as it's gonna get.
That's, yep, yep. Mr. Riley.
I, it's funny because it's usually us trying to guide you towards this as opposed to the more industrial work. And I would, there was another example that was in two weeks ago that looked more.
These are the visions of sites that you have, right?
Yeah, so these photos here are other prime locations. One industrial, one residential in style.
The top one looks like it's a food store, so that's no good.
Right.
But I kind of prefer the bottom one because this one, because it's a storage facility.
Wow.
It should look like one. This looks like a freaking.
A hotel.
A college apartment complex for, you know, guard departments.
I kind of like that.
Fits in in the neighborhood.
All I'm saying is normally we're trying to push you there.
Right.
And for once I'm sitting there going, no, go the other way. Personally, I would, I, but, you know, it's your project, if that's what you want to do, then be happy. I don't share your vision on this one, but.
Okay.
We appreciate the comments.
Well said.
I don't have any objection to these drawings.
Nope, I have none.
I just think you need to make a decision whether you affirm to the A R B and whether you have a public hearing.
Let's see the A R B says first.
Yeah, I think an A R B delegation would be. Are we okay with that? Brad?
We'll just send it to the A R B first and then have.
Brad, do you have any comments regarding this?
Yeah, I think it has to go to A R B or my vote, so maybe.
But in reference to the.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm at the plan and it works for me.
Ron, is there information that we're still?
No.
Okay.
The only thing I had was lighting that corrected that.
Okay. So then I guess we could refer this to the A R B, Megan, if you don't mind. We look forward to seeing you back here again.
Make a motion not to have a public hearing or not? At least make a decision. No, you could decide when he comes back from the A R B.
Yeah. We'll decide when he comes back from the A R B. I don't expect the A R B to do anything, but.
Does that push our timeline out at all? I'm just curious.
Yeah.
It does, okay.
It will because we only have one November meeting and one December meeting, so it's really playing with. What's his, what's his A R B?
You can get on the A R B in October.
Okay.
It would be the twenty.
You can be back here in November.
First for the A R B?
Yeah.
And then he could come back to the November thirteenth meeting? But we would have to decide now about public hearing because we have to notice it.
Oh, we said, you said we weren't doing the public hearing last time, but maybe.
Yeah, if we came back on the thirteenth, then it would have to be the following month, right?
Well, you come back to the planning, if they have to notice it for a public hearing, we already missed October twenty-third, so it would have to be decided tonight probably for the November meeting.
Larry?
If we have a public hearing. If we don't have a public hearing, then we can come back in November and close this up.
What do we need one for?
Nobody's come to any of these things.
We did have a public hearing with the initial application.
Right. And nobody really, there was no neighborhood.
No.
I mean, everybody wants to see a trailer go away.
Yeah.
I'm okay with the.
No public.
Well, you know, look where it is.
Yeah.
So you're in the parking lot of a train station.
Yeah.
And so what are we, what are we going to accomplish with a public meeting? I'm a public hearing.
Mr. Riley.
Would my vision go on of the project? I would say yes, but since it's not, I don't see why we would need one, so.
So we don't really want a public hearing?
I don't see how it's gonna move the ball here.
No.
I can't imagine anybody in the neighborhood saying, oh, that's terrible, let's do it the way it is.
Yeah. So we're going to avoid the public hearing. Get him to the A R B, get him out of the A R B as quickly as possible. Get him back here and get him building in the fall here.
Love it.
Yeah, let's put it up.
Let's have that baby done before springtime.
That will be our goal. Maybe Fourth of July, it's gonna take a little time, but.
Maybe the solar panel people will come back. Why do they want to put solar panels on top of, they want to put solar panels on top of the old, the cell.
The other one, yeah.
Believe it or not, that's a big, a big thing now.
And sell the power.
Yeah.
To the village. They never came back.
Yeah.
Oh, they did it.
They did?
It's up there.
They're up there?
Yeah, you perked it.
Okay. Well, I know that they were. I was sleeping that month. I'm waiting for the windmills.
Oh, yeah, that's what happens with those.
You should do windmills, just to keep it different.
Yeah, I inspected it and we closed it out, they're up there. Because it's an industrial zone, you can have solar, it's an additional use.
I don't remember coming back.
Got it.
Oh, well. Well, thank, we, thank you. We look forward to seeing you and it's, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
You too.
Do I need to submit any applications for the A R B?
So this board's gonna do a referral, October twenty-first. It's gonna be on before them. It's in the same meeting, it's on a Tuesday, it's at six P M., not five P M. Someone should probably be here. But we'll.
Bring samples with you, bring color samples with you.
What I'll do tomorrow is I'll write up the referral, I'll send it to you in an email. I'll C C the A R B secretary on it and then you and she can coordinate what you need and what she needs from you. Usually it's like eleven by seventeen and I just want to see these photos, color rendering, all that stuff.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
One oh four West Hampton L L C, one oh four Main Street. Mr. Albert, good to see you this evening. Again, this is the rendering. Okay, yeah. Okay.
Oh, I have it, sorry. Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. This is not different than what you submitted?
No, no, I just slipped the breakdown.
Good evening. So to address the two main focus. One was the fenestration on the side facing the parks right of way along with some architectural details. So we gave you a rendering sketch of the corner boards and fascian freeze boards and the oval window detail and grills, of course, in the windows and compliant downlight sconces. And also it was noted that to trim the hedge down to expose a little bit of the side, though not a hundred percent necessary because I don't believe the hedge is over the, what would be eight foot to the bottom, rather to the top of the windows and around seven foot to the bottom of the windows. But this is just so that it doesn't look like a sheer wall. The second question was, of course, the parking. And at this juncture, we hope that we can be referred to the zoning board or the board of zoning appeals for that additional required parking space.
Start with you, Ron.
I put some comments in, and they've addressed most of them. I think the biggest issue is how it looks along that walkway, you know, into the park. You know, as far as that, we've been over the parking, you know, the parking, the variance of what the parking spaces are, you know, they're not typical of our commercial. They're not that readily accessible. You have to back out or back in, one or the other, to use them. It's not often that we have that set up. And the code does seem to really give that, you know, two-way parking, two-way aisle is supposed to have twenty-four feet. We have fifteen. You know, it's, it's constrained. It's not typical, easily accessible commercial parking. It's, you know, it's part of the, kind of part of the decision whether you, this is for valid use of the park.
If I might add, we did increase the side yard three foot to three foot total. And we did shrink the building to the proposed addition to under seven hundred and fifty square foot, which requires one additional parking space from the B Z A. With regard to the backing out, and please correct me if I'm mistaken, but I believe that with one-way backing out, that the twenty-four-foot standard is not applicable or can be made not applicable.
Well, it's two-way traffic. Whether the car backs out or drives in, it's two different directions it travels.
Well, the angle of the design, the angle of design, it's a one-way street. So correct, if you back out, you have to back in to the flow of traffic, but that already exists.
Yes, there is one existing space there.
Uh, two.
Well, yeah, but then you're, then you're locking that person in. So I, in both the existing and proposed, I would count that as one space. You know, yes, you can get another one in there, but I'm not gonna count either one of the two.
I agree that the design, if the two cars parked, which is why we don't have a problem with going for a variance for two spaces. I do understand that, that there's a logistical, if two cars are parked in. There is enough width, though. There is enough width, even if two cars are there, with the way that R and M drew it, so that you could go past even the second head ends parking.
I, I think it's part of the zoning board's decisions to how appropriate that is.
Sometimes you just can't get eight great tomatoes and that itty-bitty can't.
If I may speak, there's two architectural sort of commercial types that we have throughout the village, the way that we look at it. There's one that's more of a New York City road type where one structure attaches to the next one and there's really no side yards, like one twenty-eight Main Street. And then there's the ones that were more, more often than not, they were single-family residences that were converted to a commercial used because of their position as it relates to Main Street. And this is what this is. So it's a, it's a freestanding structure, it's got space around it. And I feel like this addition is trying to make it the other type. And I also think that we may have a little bit of a segmentation here because you had a property that had three buildings on it, it got subdivided. And as part of that, it became a lot more valuable. It's two lots that can be sold independently. And now we're going back and overdeveloping one of the lots and putting parking on the other lot, which should have been done without a subdivision.
Right.
So it's really, there's really conflicting design.
Well, we're just trying to max out.
It's not in the interest of good planning.
Well, can I address?
Or they're just parking variances, in my, in my opinion.
I'd like to address that because there's a very specific thing that occurred. Mr. Weinberger bought this property before it was subdivided. However, because of the process of the subdivision, which was not completed, the health department had already recognized the subdivision and would not allow for the hooking into the sewer district, except if we then followed up and completed the subdivision. But Mr. Weinberger never purchased it with that intent. So now, just to further it, in the approval process of the subdivision, there was a small easement granted just to accommodate the subdivision. It was the walkway going into what you call number five glovers. The post office recognizes it as number three glovers. So therein was the Gordian knot. So we had to hook into the sewer district. We then came back to the planning board. We went back to the zoning board. The subdivision was completed, the map filed. But the issue was that it was the same owner. And in this particular instance, there was no automatic merger. But there already is a easement. And this would expand that easement for half of the one space and all of the second space. But it does allow us with the design to landscape and light very nicely without impacting the look of the property. So we've kind of had all of these conflicts, but, and just to point to address the, the conflict between row house or conversion. So the slight step back was actually part of the concept of the planning notes that the building should be complimentary, proportionally reduced by that expansion. And the setback is only now six and a half feet. And there's a lawn area in front of that setback and a permeable brick walk that goes right from alongside the right of way to the park. So we've tried to keep all of that in line and especially the hedge and especially the parking. So we've kind of reduced it to basically adding a bathroom and a seven hundred square foot room.
Can I just ask you to clarify, did you say that your client started the subdivision?
No.
He bought it.
He bought it in its entirety as one lot. When we went to hook into the sewer district, the health department would not recognize it as a single lot. They had already approved the subdivision and acted with their might. And we could not hook into the sewers unless we completed the subdivision. So we did. By B Z A, by planning.
Semantics.
And by recording of the subdivision.
No, it was still one lot and then it was made two lots and.
Yes.
But I'm sure this was all on the tape.
Be that as it may, I'm still back to the same problem I had last time. It was a very constrained lot when he bought it. You should have recognized that fact. This doesn't do anything and there's no way that this parking can be, should be counted. You're gonna have people backing out, you have vehicle problems, you have pedestrian problems. And it'll be setting a hell of a terrible precedent for the downtown. You're gonna have everybody in their brother covenant with very imaginative parking situations.
Yeah.
I'm not entertaining that. But just for the parking alone, I can't sign on to this.
Mr. Raka.
You know, the only issue is still, still the parking, you know, though.
Well, as I said, the municipal lot is a block away. It is the most underutilized municipal lot in the village. And we would go for the four spaces, I'm sorry, it's now three spaces. So we would go for the three spaces to the B Z A. And I have to be honest here, it would be much cheaper for us to do that. It would be less offensive in terms of backing into glovers. It would be less of an impact on the two lots. It would alleviate the need for a easement expansion. And it would be the simplest for the entire process. It would leave everything just the way it is. So, and the landscape exceeds the required twenty percent. And as I say, if we boil it down, it's a seven hundred square foot room and a bathroom. And it's in harmony with the existing building and will be built to the same standards. It's one story, it's scaled very nicely, in fact. I think it'd be a very nice look. This is where I thought the entrance to the park would be accentuated and I thought outside of the box and thought about putting some sort of landmark clock there, but I don't want to introduce that again, we'll leave that for another day. But it's just a, it's, it's consistent with the architecture. I have pictures of other buildings that are similarly situated in the village on the Main Street.
Mr. Jones, do you have anything to add to this?
I think it's, to me, the space is really overstuffed, but it's also a Main Street if this building was built. It's just another Main Street facade and Main Street buildings tend to be jammed up against one another. I don't have so much problem with the privet on the side and what height it is with the lights and stuff. You know, I don't really have a problem with the three-car parking, but it's a nuisance of a street to back in and out and try and park on there. So it just seems like it's overstuffing this lot.
Well, we don't exceed the permitted lot coverage at all.
Mr. Riley, do you want to add anything?
Just because something is permitted doesn't mean it's wise.
Yeah.
I think we're asking for too much, too. I think the parking situation would set a unacceptable precedent. It's gonna leave us open to a lot of questions by other applicants that I see looming on the horizon.
The code does give us permission to go to the B Z A.
I beg your pardon?
The code does give us permission to go to the B Z A.
Well, you can go to the Z B A. And we're not trying to contramend the code, but you may go without the approval of the planning board.
I understand.
If you're gonna go to the Z B A, I can't give a recommendation on this trident parking thing to them to say this is okay. You would have to go with a completely different parking.
For the three, yeah, for the three, and that's what I'm suggesting, let us do that then. And that eliminates that very big question.
Well, I think what we'd like to do is have the village attorney here at the next meeting before we actually formulate what we're going to tell the Z B A.
Well, I think what we'd like to do is have the village attorney here at the next meeting before we actually formulate what we're going to tell the ZBA. And give us all a chance to take a look at this one last time. We'll have Don here at the next meeting, so you'll have five members of the board and the village attorney present. I think that would be a prudent move on your part. I mean, you could certainly insist on us moving you to the ZBA today, but I don't know that that would be in your best interests because the general consensus that we have here would lead you to a favorable outcome. And we haven't had the opportunity to discuss it with village council.
I understand, and-
But even if you went to the-
We don't make the recommendation to the ZBA. You have to apply to the ZBA. The only thing that will happen is you'll make the application and they're gonna ask for planning board input.
Right.
So what you're hearing from the planning board is gonna go back to the ZBA.
So I would suggest we wait for the 23rd.
Okay.
And try again.
Yeah.
Um, I don't see any changes required. He's certainly-
Yeah, if, if this is the plan you want to go with, let's leave this as is.
Yes.
You could just pick up this discussion. You don't have to go over the presentation of what you're proposing again, but then we can have the, attorney can tell the other board member and this board and, you know, what, what his recommendation is going for.
Thank you, Mr. Riley.
That's fine.
We appreciate your patience.
Okay, you bet. Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you. And we do appreciate your effort.
Yeah.
I do yours.
All right, we have minutes from September 25th.
Which approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a board consultation that will probably chunk the horse.
Happy agenda on the 23rd for the board, so eat your Wheaties. Four fill applications and a bunch of returns. Return of 17 Library subdivision, return of, uh, the inn, 43 Main Street. Return of the gables that was pushed off of tonight's agenda. And return of 104. In addition, we will be hearing that 99B, that waiver, got their ARB recommendations, so they'll be on. And then Flora has made a resubmission, which will circulate to the board next week, and they'll be on, so a lot to do.
Lot to do, yeah, busy folks.
Fill applications won't be anything.
Well, the 17 library is a public hearing and then there's three fill public hearings. Ron and I already spoke to them. We're hoping that they'll make the tweaks before. Should be open and shuts.
I need a motion to close.
So moved.
All in favor?